I feel like if they use the K-word for Jewish people, like they use the N-word for black people, there wouldn't be a word. And I'm not saying that, I'm not anti-Semitic. I'm saying that because it produces a visceral response, a visceral, you know, response. And growing up in Andover Public Schools, when I had that visceral response and they called me out my name, I beat them up. So you're creating, you're creating a thing for these kids to be angry. You're creating a thing for them to be angry all the time. And I don't think that's right at all. I absolutely, it's not right. So you should not allow the word to be used in public. It should not be used in school. You can't go into jobs using that word. So it should not be used. It's just my point of view. And everybody has their word. You don't have to be Jewish. Everybody has their word. So I figured I'd tell you that. I do think that we should be on the agenda so that the kids can tell you for themselves. This is, this is, makes me angry. And I just moved to this town. I'm from Andover. I came out of Lexington. I just got here. Not on my watch. It's not happening on my watch. You're not hurting any more children. If you've hurt A scores, adverse childhood, you know what I'm talking about? The A scores that you have, you're creating worse kids and it creates DNA changes. Stop doing that to our children. I'm done.
Thank you very much. Just so you know, we are not able to respond to public comment. Thank you for your comments.
That's why I asked to be on the agenda.
I understand.
All right. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to address the committee at this time? No? Okay. So, come back to the agenda. I do not see our student representative with us tonight. So that brings us to reports and presentations of superintendent and staff. Dr. Crowley?
Sure. First up is Special Education Parent Advisory Committee update is on the agenda. I think Mr. Chapman is here.
That is correct. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you. Just a quick introduction. I'm Adam Chapman, Woburn resident since 2003. CPAC volunteer since 2013. The CPAC, for those at home, is, as was stated, Woburn Special Education Parents Advisory Council, where a group of parent volunteers that provide resources and advocacy for students with disabilities and their families. I served three consecutive terms as CPAC treasurer, starting in 2018. Last of those just ended back in June. Now, a quick update. After a rough start to the school year and an overall downward trend in engagement over the last couple of years, current CPAC president Julie Cotton and vice president Jennifer Young had moved to put the group on hiatus last month. I reached out to them and I offered to help keep things going. My kids are a little bit older now. I've got, I work a morning shift currently, so I have a little bit more time to give. So I requested to renew my general membership as defined by Article 4 of our current CPAC bylaws, so I could begin serving as a volunteer again. Now, per Article 11 of the CPAC bylaws, I've been appointed to head up a new subcommittee on community engagement and rebuilding, and that's what brings me here tonight. CPAC's short-term goal, just to keep it brief, reconnecting with you all, reconnecting with the school committee. Mass General Law, Chapter 71B, Section 3 states, "The school committee shall establish a parent advisory council on special education," which you've done. And I'm here to say that the CPAC is still here, willing and able to fulfill our advisory role on the education and safety of students with disabilities here in Woburn. I'd like to thank Mr. Lipsit for putting us on the agenda this evening, Ms. Wetzel for sharing the minutes from last week's SSA subcommittee meeting, and to Mr. Austin for inviting CPAC to be part of the Community Relations Subcommittee moving forward, looking forward to those connections. So that short-term goal is meant to feed into a long-term goal, which is identifying and recruiting our next group of parent volunteers. We'll have some information to share on that front in the new year. We'll be asking the school committee to help get the word out to Woburn families. We used to have the people power to be able to reach, you know, reach out a lot more often. You know, we would email school principals to send our flyers out. We would attend PTO meetings about once a year. We hope to grow our membership back again to get to that point. In the meantime, we'll lean on your communication resources and those of Woburn Public Schools to help us connect with families. And on that note, to anyone watching this live or on YouTube or reading the transcript, we need you. If you're a Woburn parent with an urge to volunteer, be it for an hour a week or an hour a month, let's talk. You can find our email address and connect with us, monitoring that every day on our website, which is woburncpac.org. Lots of resources that are helpful there as well, and we continue to add to them. Thanks to the great event we were able to take part in last week, that resource event at the high school was tremendous. Thank you all again for your time, for having us here. We'll give you some more updates in the future. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any this evening. Yes?
Yeah, thank you. Hi, I just want to say, welcome back.
Good to be back.
After a brief hiatus.
Yeah.
We're happy to have you and look forward to working with you on SSA and then as a school committee member. And if there's anything, I know you mentioned a lot of things that we can help with in terms of spreading the word.
Yes.
Inviting you to subcommittee meetings. Is there anything else that we can be doing as a committee to help?
We'll let you know. Right now, it's just the recruitment phase of things, of just kind of reminding people that the CPAC exists, you know, what are, what are, what the resources that we provide, and just trying to find again that next group of parents. We've had a really good, solid core over the last five years. But as you know, the people that volunteer in our group typically are people that are caring for kids who have disabilities, a lot of times more than one, a lot of times kids with really acute disabilities. So the burnout rate's pretty high. So we're looking for that next group of people that kind of has walked that path so they can share their experiences and their resources with other parents that might need to hear from them. So that's kind of where we're at right now, but we'll certainly continue to keep you abreast and lean on you for resources.
And we should direct anyone that we find that's interested to the CPAC website and to the email.
Absolutely. And the email address is right, it's all over there. It's wps.cpac@gmail.com. If you, if that goes into the minutes, that's fine too. But either the website, the email address, either way, we're monitoring it constantly and actually currently even helping out parents that have reached out and are looking for help with this and that, so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Any further questions? Ms. Crowley, go ahead.
Mr. Chapman, thank you so much for coming tonight. I guess my only question or suggestion is to maybe reach out to SEEM.
Yes.
See if they, you know, they probably have a very active parent group that might, maybe you could partner with them to join some of their events. That might be one lead. The second thing is obviously neighboring communities. You know, they might have a CPAC, you could share the wealth, so to speak.
Yes.
The resources.
No, that's a good, I like, I hadn't thought of SEEM, and yes, we're really lucky where we partner with Woburn Public Schools and we're able to continue every year to renew our subscription to Mass PAC, so we have those resources. In fact, when we were kind of figuring out, okay, how do we move forward, Leslie from FCSN, who's kind of the head of Mass PAC, was instrumental in kind of going through our bylaws with us and letting us know, okay, here's what you can do, here's what you can't do, and here's what you need to do moving forward. So we're lucky to have that as a resource, but I like.
And I know, obviously, you are a big fan of the Federation.
Yes.
And that might be a nice resource.
Yes.
Because I know one of the responsibilities of CPAC, the main responsibility is to do the parent rights seminars.
Yep.
So maybe they might have some ideas for you.
We're hoping to get one on the books in the new year.
Oh, great.
And once we do, we'll let you know so you can help get the word out.
Fantastic, thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Further questions? Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Jan. If I could, Adam, you mentioned how, you know, you're a great resource to the parents. And without getting too technical, if you could just give us a couple of examples of, you know, why a parent will reach out to you, perhaps, you know, again, you're beginning your move in public schools, you're new to all of this, you got a lot going on, your child's, you know, just enrolled, and you're settling down. Why should I contact Adam Chapman at the CPAC? What are you going, what should I be asking for, or what information should I need from you immediately? And then again, further down the road, obviously, you've been around for a while, someone, someone else has attended lots of your workshops. What else do you offer for parents, just so that people know, you know, what, kind of just the little things that you do as well?
It's a great question, Mr. Moren. And really, the main thing we offer are resources. And resources specifically for parents, I'll give you a couple of examples since you asked for them. Maybe you have a kiddo that has a fresh autism diagnosis. You had a neuropsych evaluation done, they've been diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. This is something new to you, it's a new world to you, you don't know how to navigate it, what the next steps are. We have people in our group that have, myself included, that have walked that path and can kind of point you in the right direction, set you up with resources here in Woburn, in Woburn Public Schools, kind of point you in the right direction, who to talk to, resources in the community, resources in the state. That's primary, but secondary is just having someone who kind of has experienced what either you're going through or what you'll likely be going through, that can kind of empathize with you. And a lot of times, I feel like that that's, that community part of it is an important part of what the CPAC provides too.
I think that was my main point, Adam, is just the community effort of it all, you know?
Yeah.
They know what I'm talking about. Well, you guys know what that person's talking about.
Sure. And I feel like, oh, sorry. I feel like there's a lot of people out there too. And I feel like if we do what we can to get the word out, you know, about what CPAC is doing and that we're here and that there are resources available, hopefully those people will come together and, you know, by the end of the school year, our goal is to have a new executive board in place.
Great. While you were sitting there chatting, we had someone, the superintendent perhaps, put up your website right behind you if you wanted to highlight any insight on that.
I updated it earlier tonight, so excellent. It's like we planned it. Excellent.
Ms. Corley.
And do you have a meeting scheduled at this time that you can?
We don't have a meeting to promote at this time. I wish we had, but we're not at that level yet. But what we'll do is we'll likely have some sort of open meeting sometime in the winter, after the first of the year. We have traditionally hosted, we're almost on the 20th year of our, we started it as the Woburn CPAC College Fair. It's now kind of become something different. It's a college and transition fair, which speaks to kids with disabilities that are about to graduate from high school or on that path, and maybe they're not ready for a four-year school or even a two-year school, but they want to know if there's options out there for them. We put that resource together. We're hoping to have that, have that tradition continue this March. But yes, more information to follow, and then some community outreach as well. Would like to do some collaborative pop-ups, maybe, you know, Mr. Austin and I go and do joint office hours at the library, or the Boys and Girls Club, or something like that, just to continue the teamwork between school committee and CPAC and to help get the word out.
And I know you generally did this January meeting, the kind of meet and greet with the different special ed staff, so.
Perhaps we'll bring that back.
That would be great.
It's been a while.
And you mentioned 2003. I've known you since 1998, so I'm going to take credit for you coming to Woburn.
You recruited me and I didn't even know it.
That's right.
Excellent.
Right out of Wakefield.
Straight out.
Ms. Ryan.
Just, excuse me, so that people are aware, the CPAC website is linked on the Woburn Public Schools on the Special Education page. There's the current information and resources, and it takes you right to the website.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That's great.
Is there any, oh, Ms. Austin, go ahead.
So I'm a big fan of Adam. Not because.
I'm a big fan of yours too.
He's on radio, but because Adam has actually done more than just offered resources. He actually sat with my wife and I last minute, came to our home and sat with us, and we poured our heart out to him, kind of going through the process of special education and not sure how to navigate it. Adam was there to give us listening ear, and I feel like we don't always see the importance of having someone listen to us or listen to someone's heart. So I would say that that is a huge asset of not just Adam, but CPAC in a whole meeting that I have gone to. It has been a listening session for many people. Many people will show up and pour their heart out because they're struggling. And so I'm a huge fan, and whatever I can do, as we, Adam and I talked on yesterday, matter of fact, how I can support you, support the mission to be an ally, because I believe in what CPAC stands for. And again, I'm a fan of you and Adam, so I'm here for you. Let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. And thanks for that example too, because that is, again, kind of circling back to what I was saying to Mr. Moren, and that, you know, yes, it's great to have people that are in the know when it comes to resources and can connect you to the people you need to be speaking to in Woburn Public Schools, or, you know, collaborative like SEEM or LAB or another place like that, but sometimes it just helps to have someone to talk to who knows what you've gone, you've got, you're going through and who's gone through what you're going through and can give you a little bit of empathy. And that's, that's the goal of CPAC as well, so.
And just connecting parents to one another.
Yeah, exactly. Just build a community. What we're trying to do here in Woburn on a whole bunch of different levels, we're trying to do the same in the CPAC. So thanks again for that, Mr. Austin, I appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you very much. If there are no further questions from the committee? All right.
Thanks all.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Take good care.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is the Woburn Public Schools Fine and Performing Arts Department update. So there's no walk-up music or anything, so I'll, if I could have.
They could sing.
Yeah.
Please.
The timing is terrific, so I'm sure you're going to walk through all of the events that have just happened. ELF just happened. There's concerts everywhere. And so Ms. Tifo's the coordinator to walk us through.
If I can just, I'm sorry, interrupt you for just one second.
I'm just being notified we have some issues with the cable live feed.
They're not problems on site, they're problems with the high school, but we can continue by understanding it is being recorded. Is that?
I can go find, I have difficulty, it's just the high school, I was working on stuff.
We'll continue.
He's just running out now.
He's fine.
So good.
We're good? Okay, thank you.
This would never happen at our production. Because we have the kids running it.
I certainly didn't.
It was very ironic.
Of course, of course. All right, good evening. My name is Susan Tifo, and I am the, I have the privilege of serving as the K-12 Visual and Performing Arts Coordinator. In 2019, I stood before you with a heartfelt dream. I asked for your support in funding a, to bring a theater program to life, a program that could inspire, empower, and transform the lives of our students. That night, you believed in my passion, and together we took the steps towards creating something truly extraordinary. Amid the challenges of the COVID and hybrid learning years, we were incredibly fortunate to welcome Mr. Noah Thomas as our part-time theater teacher and musical director. From the moment he joined us, his vision aligned perfectly with what I hoped to achieve. He brought to life a theater model called the Woburn Stage Company, which emphasized a profound truth that every role, from the tech crew to the writers to the cast members on stage, holds equal value. Everyone matters, everyone is part of the team. As the program and numbers of classes grew, so did the impact. In 2021, Mr. Thomas was hired full-time, and since then, he has brought over 25 productions to our community. Just this year, our production of ELF the Musical drew an audience of over 1,800 people, a testament to the power of theater to bring us together. This program is more than a dream realized, it's a life-changing opportunity for students. I wanted to share with you what I see day in and day out when I walk into a theater class or the high school auditorium as the Stage Company members prepare a show. I see the power of expression and confidence and empathy. This is where the students have the first real chance to express themselves. It's a safe space where they can take risks without fear of judgment. They can step into someone else's shoes and see the world through their eyes. I see a sense of belonging. It brings joy to my heart when I see students working together on sets, running their lines, or directing the next act. They have created a family by working together. I see the creative outlet in the magic of transformation. It's a space where students can be creative, express ideas, and explore passions. One of my favorite places to be during a show is up in the tech booth, where I have an overview of the stage, and I see the students control the light, sound, and communicate to backstage members. I see the lessons that go far beyond the stage and into their life. Most importantly, they learn teamwork, public speaking, time management, and responsibilities. These lessons will stay with them for life. So here is my life lesson speech for all of you. To all the students that we've asked here to be here tonight, and those already immersed in theater, and those who are just considering it in their family members, never forget the incredible power of your voice. No matter where life takes you, the stage will always be there. On a personal note, before I started a career in education, I spent 10 fabulous years working in event production with the Fortune 500 companies. During that time, I learned the magic of teamwork and the limitless potential that comes from pursuing your passions. That magic is still with me every day. So anyone, so to anyone whose heart is drawn to the stage, whether performing in the spotlight or working behind the scenes, I want you to hold on to that dream. Believe in yourself, because there are countless opportunities waiting for you. Take the inspiration from my favorite singer, Taylor Swift. Her success, don't laugh, her success isn't just about her talent, it's about the team behind her, the culture they've built together, and the shared dedication of creating something extraordinary. It's proof that when people come together with a passion, hard work, and a shared vision, they can achieve incredible things. So dream big. With courage, dedication, and heart, you too can be part of this extraordinary experience. To the school administration, school committee, city officials, and the community of Woburn, thank you for believing in the power of the arts and for making a profound difference in the lives of our students. So tonight, we are lucky that we have three wonderful students, Jo, Allison, and Victoria. I've already given them homework, they already have a question that was given to them, and the three of them are going to come and sit here, and they're going to state their name, and they're going to give you the question, and they will do the answer for you. So thank you. And then Mr. Thomas will speak after they do.
Your turn.
Hi, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
My question was the following. How was being part of the theater company, how has being part of the theater company impacted your decision to pursue a career in the performing arts? Being a part of the Woburn High Stage Company has been absolutely essential to my decision in picking a career in the performing arts. I consider the impact of my experience in the company so big that I give it all the credit for my musical theater major that I am going into in the fall. I wanted to do theater as early as in middle school, but due to COVID changes, I wasn't able to participate in that, and that left me thinking that I wouldn't ever be able to chase after my dream. However, in my time in the Stage Company, not only did I find a safe space, but I also found out that I did have the capability to perform within me. I found out that I could work well with people to create something that other people can enjoy. I learned about projecting and enunciating and cheating out and all the nitty-gritty details that go into making a play or musical well-made and made with love. Most of all, I found self-confidence, and this confidence is what pushed me to pick a career in the performing arts, rather than being an English major. While I do enjoy English, I love working in theater a lot more, and I would have never given myself the opportunity to explore my passion for theater if it wasn't for the Woburn High Stage Company. And for that, I am forever grateful. I'm Victoria.
Hello, I'm Allison, and my question was, what is an important lesson you learned from being part of the Stage Company? Over the past few years of my involvement in the company, it's been pretty evident to those around me that theater means the world to me. But something people don't often see is that everything it was able to teach me, of course, acting and performing on stage has helped me grow into a more confident person and speaker, but there is more to it that people don't often realize. Last year, I was offered the role of student choreographer. Now, two years in, I can confidently say that this position has helped me grow as a person. From running warm-ups for like 30 high schoolers at once, learning and taking advice from my mentor, Ms. Caldwell, and being able to put my own choreography into one of our plays, I have gained important insight into what it is like to be a leader. Creating my own choreography for a show was a lot of responsibility and pressure, but I was able to do something I've loved and cared about since I was six, and gained important experience in problem-solving when things like timing were off, and learning to work with people's strengths and their weaknesses. Dance is really important to me, so this position gave me a voice and something I am passionate about. Taking on leadership like this was an important adjustment that taught me how to truly use this voice, manage people, and collaborate well with my peers. Everything theater has taught me will continue to mean something in many aspects of my life in the future paths I will take in and outside of theater. So on top of all the fun I've had acting, singing, and dancing on stage, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that I have to thank theater for, for teaching me to keep pushing myself and to step up to become a leader and a positive role model for those
Hello, my name is Joseph, and the question that I was asked was, what is being a part of the Stage Company meant to me? And it really has meant community to me, as when I first started it in freshman year, I really didn't know anyone or didn't really have any connections to anyone in Woburn or really the high school, due to some personal events that happened to me when I was younger, causing me to really push away from everyone. But theater really helped me to grow into being someone that I can personally help find others and to also find a community of like-minded individuals. It is, it has also helped foster the community, really helped me find people that I can talk to every day and do things like theater, which I think is really the biggest part of it. Because if there wasn't the community that has been built up, I don't think I would have, and many others, would have been able to even do theater or the performing arts at Woburn, because we have had such great safety nets from the teachers and the students that all take part, that it really helps foster our growth and also who we are as individuals.
Good. Yay.
Thank you. So.
I hope you'd be willing to answer any questions from the committee. We'd certainly hear from you first, Mr. Thomas, and then.
Yeah, and then we can throw them back. We've got time. Absolutely. All right. All right. I get myself into big trouble when I speak off the cuff, so I'll only say two off-the-cuff things. And my first is just, I'm really, when I listen to these students speak, and also there was a fourth student, Kayden, who's kind of more behind the scenes, but he couldn't come tonight. But his, his question was, what lifelong skills have you learned? Which is kind of hard to judge at age 18, but since his sort of origin story was, he was a freshman hanging out after some event, and someone said, hey, do you want to use some power tools? And he said, yeah. And then he became our, like, company stage manager sometime after that, and who's the person who's involved in like calling all the cues in the shows and everything. So his story is important too. But in listening to, listening to these students speak, I just, I also want to say that it's important for me to have that, to have a community that's a safe place and also have, at the same time, have high expectations of those students and believe in them in terms of the work that they can do. And so I have to say that I'm really proud of these students, and I'm proud of the students who are not here for the work that they've done, especially on the most recent production. So I wanted to say that off the cuff. The other thing is that I just, I have to sort of fall over myself thanking you for your support once again, because, you know, like Sue said, there's no way that any of this could happen without support from the top. It just, it would not be possible. So I do, for your support over the years and for all these moments where we've been able to come in and give you an update and say, hey, this is what's happening, this is how, what your support has meant to students, this is what it's, this is the fruit that it's born, you know, thank you for your support. It has made a difference, and it makes a difference. All right, so let me just open up my list of demands here. No, so some of you have been around a while, and you've heard me say the same things, and I'm going to repeat one thing that I've said pretty much every time I've come up here to speak, which is that I am very, I do not speak the language of mission statement. It is like a foreign language to me. I'm very bad at writing. I'm very bad at writing mission statements, vision statements. But for whatever reason, when it came to, when it came to the idea of starting a theater program, starting up a theater program, strengthening it, whatever you want to call it, for some reason, the stars aligned, everything made sense to me. I saw things sort of crystal clear. And the three words that I keep repeating, which encapsulate that vision statement are elevate, generate, and build. Yes, I know, I still haven't found a word that rhymes with the other two. But elevate to me means that it's my, so this is my personal mission for the theater company and for even the performing arts in Woburn. Elevate is to elevate the production value, elevate the status of the program, the status of the arts in Woburn, and elevate the visibility. Generate has to do with generating excitement, generating buzz both in the school and in the wider Woburn community. And building, really mostly has to do with building community, both in the community of students and again, the community within the wider Woburn community. Community in the community, whatever. Building a theater community, building a supportive theater community within Woburn. So when it comes to Elf, which I know a lot of you were able to see onstage, I'm very excited about Elf, not just because of what the story is. And it's a fun, engaging story. It's not the most serious story we've told onstage. But I'm really excited about it because of everything that that show represented. And I think, I just wanted to run through the ways that, to me, it sort of ticks all the boxes of that mission statement. So as Sue alluded to, it shattered all of our previous box office, box office attendance records, which was very exciting. We had two sold-out shows, you know, in a place where we only do three productions, or three performances. Selling out two of those nights was like, was a huge boost. We hadn't sold out a single show prior to that. So it was really cool to see all of that effort over the years pay off in those exciting nights. And even opening night was not, I mean, it was a full house. You know, the other, so another thing is that I've, it moved from just, okay, the high school is having a performance this night, to what I really sensed as a community event. Like, it was a community event. People were excited about it, they wanted to go see it. I was getting these crazy calls like, oh, do you have any tickets? Are there any tickets? Like, oh, yeah, I got some, I got two tickets for Saturday night. And it was like, all this like, it sort of like built its own momentum, and it was exciting. So, you know, that helped in generating buzz. It elevated the status to, it elevated the visibility of that program. And that's all really exciting. It also, for the first time, other student groups reached out to us. Believe it or not, that was the first. The Model UN Club reached out to us and wanted to partner with us to do a fundraiser. Great, cool. Student Council reached out to us, and they wanted to incorporate the show into Spirit Week. And that was a first, that was cool. So all that was really exciting. And again, it's part of the, you know, elevating the status of the program within the school itself. In terms of building community, this year, a lot of what happened this year probably wouldn't have been possible without the involvement of some really key, important parents who stepped up to finally make this parent organization happen. It's still not very big, but it is, it's a reality which it wasn't in the past. So that's very exciting. So all of those things, so that's, in my mind, that's how it ticks all those boxes. In terms of visibility and elevation, you know, another thing that was important to me, it was exciting to see the mayor get on board. Even over the summer, I was like, we're going to get people involved in this. We're going to get the mayor involved in this. We're going to get someone from the school committee involved in this. We're going to get upper admin involved in this and help make it something that some, that people want to be involved in, and people are excited to be involved in. And it definitely created a lot of chatter. It was really, I don't know if any of you were there on Thursday night when the mayor appeared onstage, but it was like, there was a lot of, wait, is that, oh, oh, wait. There was a lot of that, and it was very cute and funny. So I think that's the way in which, if I'm giving an update about this program, you know, I think that's the way, those are the ways in which the, some of the, some of those goals have actually come to fruition. And to me, I think that's really exciting. Because there was a lot of waiting, there was a lot of like building, there was a lot of, I don't know how this is going to go. But it's been six years of that, and it takes a long time. Takes a really long time to build up to something like that. So I also will say, in terms of elevating programs, Jack Tully has now given me some real competition because he's also been elevating the performing arts in Woburn by winning a big competition for the band. So, you know, like, Jack, if you're listening, it's on now. But I'm grateful to Jack because he stepped in and was the conductor for Elf also. So, yeah, it's friendly competition. All right, so that I don't talk too long, I just want to say something about the future. Last time I sat here, probably, I definitely said, give me a million dollars. Now, look, the offer still stands, you can do that, that's fine. But I'll shave off 90% and just ask for $100,000. But actually, no, I'm being cheeky when I say that. I just want $80,000. No, I'm kidding. Most of that, I do want that. But, and I have a quote with that number written on it. But actually, most of that can be found through grants as we convert our conventional lighting system in the auditorium over to LED lighting, which actually is an energy saver. And so we can have our energy person, our energy czar, be working on that. I have very concrete plans. It's just my very cheeky way of saying I'm on it. But, you know, your ongoing support is really important, too. And in terms of the future, we are, once again, I just got confirmation that we're once again hosting the METG High School Theater Festival, which is going to be in March. We're one of the prelims, prelim stage host sites. And again, to me, that's like, that's an important thing. It's not really a status thing, but it's kind of a status thing, it's a little bit. We've never moved on in the competition, fingers crossed. You know, I think we got a great script, we got a great group of kids. We have, you know, higher production values than we've ever had. So that is pretty much what I have. There's my information download for you, my update. First, before I get up, do you guys have any questions for me? And then I will get, I will get out of the way and put your students back in front of you.
Any questions for Mr. Thomas? Ms. Crowley, and then we'll go over to Ms. Watson.
The facilities updates that you referenced, to update the lighting in the auditorium. Is that, like, have you, I guess, has that reached someone's desk officially to look into that, or is this, are you just?
No, because I only, I only got the actual quote that I asked for, like, back in May. I only recently, I only got that right before our production went up. So that's my sort of cheeky way of saying, hey, you're about to get some, a serious follow-up on how can we make this happen.
Right, because as everyone was speaking, I was wondering to myself how we can, you know, support the theater program looking at the facilities and the resources aspect of it. So make sure, you know, I'd love, I'd be interested to look at what you have found in terms of great writing to improve the facilities themselves.
If I'm being totally transparent, it's not me necessarily. I know, I have a name. I know the person who has, who helped write the grants for the streetlight conversion. And our rep, excuse me, our representative at our lighting company has worked with her in the past. In fact, they worked closely, both of them, I think, on the updates that Melrose High School did to their facility. So she's a known quantity, and our lighting person knows that person. So they're connected.
Okay, well, you knew where to find us.
Yeah.
Thank you, Noah, I appreciate it. Oh, and I wanted to thank the students for coming tonight, having the courage to express, you know, these very personal narratives. So thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Crowley. Ms. Watson?
Yeah, thank you for a great update. Also, a comedic one at that, I left several times.
I tried.
I did have a question about the parent organization you said you're trying to start.
Yep.
Could you tell us a little bit more about that and how parents could get involved if they're interested in listening?
Ooh, yes. So there are a couple of parents who have spearheaded this organization. It's more, it's sort of like a PTO modeled organization. And we sort of tentatively call it the Backstage Backers, but it's not like completely official, but that's what I call it, I don't know. And so these two, so two parents have spearheaded it, and a number of other parents have really been key members in that. And really, you know, if anybody wants to get involved, they can just email me at mynthomas@woburnps.com. It's probably a lot easier than trying to get them. And then I will get them connected to those parents who kind of spearheaded things. I mean, I don't, it's not like I thank them publicly. So the parents who spearheaded are Carrie and Jeremy Johnson. And they're really great members of our community.
Cool. And then one other question, the METG Theater that's coming in March, how do we get selected to host?
So, I mean, there isn't like a complex vetting process or anything like that. It's more like, so I said, hey, two years ago, I said to the, to the president and to the committee members, you know, Woburn High School is willing to host. And I think that year, they said, it's okay, we have enough hosts, but tell us again next year. And so I did the same thing the next year. There's a form you can fill out, is your school interested in hosting for this year? You know, check yes, yes, we're interested. And so because there was a need last year, they let us, you know, step in and do our thing. There were many things about it that were very stressful because it was the first time we were doing it. I think we learned a lot of really important lessons, Sue was there. But now, we also have all this stuff that we bought for it. Like, we have three bins that are all dedicated to all this stuff. We got the signage, we got lanyards, we got like stuff for the judges, all this stuff. The judges and the supervisors from the, from the organization, which is the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild, is that right? Yeah. The METG, they were, they were very impressed with how we ran things. Like, they were, the supervisor who was in charge from that organization was extremely impressed, and he couldn't believe it was the first time we'd hosted it. So we were excited that we were going to host again. Because there were actually more schools this year that, there were 15 schools that said, we can host, and only, there were only 11 hosts. So, you know, I'm excited that we're back hosting again.
That's fantastic, thank you. And thank you to the students that came, and congratulations on your most recent production, Elf. And thank you, too, for being role models for any aspiring younger students that are looking to get into the performing arts. So thank you for all you do. And thank you.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for coming and presenting. My fellow colleagues would know I'm a fan of karaoke and singing. So you mentioned community earlier. Have you guys thought, or maybe you have, taken your show or any show to the road, maybe senior center, nursing home, daycare, preschool, anything like that?
Well, so in one sense, we did. I mean, things get very, logistics get really complicated really quickly when we're talking about moving students from school to location X. And for anybody who doesn't know, a bus right now from the company, from our busing company, for one trip, one trip costs over $500 now. What's it like, $540, something like that? $545, $545. So for our two days, it costs over $1,000 to run two buses. So what we did, though, is we hit every single elementary school and middle school in Woburn, which is what we did two years ago for Anastasia Production. And we took three, the cast performed three different musical numbers at each school. So it was like this whirlwind tour, like, we did within, what, two hours, three hours? We did five schools on the first day and four schools on the second day. I mean, it's like, it's a real wild ride. But that did, that's one of the factors that definitely helped create a buzz. Kids are excited about, you know, oh, that's Buddy the Elf. You know, kids are excited about these performers coming to their school. There was a big effort on the part of the principals to get as many kids in there to see that as possible. And I'll say the principal at the Hurd Wyman got her entire school into one room so that they could see this thing. It was very impressive. So, yeah, so that's, so, so yes, is my answer. It's, you know, yeah, yes.
When you mentioned the principal at the Hurd Wyman, I was so tempted to say, I know her.
Her name escapes me, I'm sorry if you're watching.
Any additional questions for, yes?
If I could, Mr. Chan, good evening.
Your performance is great. Another star of the show, yeah.
Myself and Taylor Swift, thank you for the opportunity to perform at Elf. It was a great night, Saturday night was fantastic. So my question, I guess, Noah, obviously it's probably a difficult number, but even like the dress rehearsal I went to and a couple I put my head on, would you have off the top of your head, how many people were involved in the production? I just saw people moving around, the stage, the crew, the people in the tech booth, outnumbered, I mean, the stage filled up, I know.
So you're talking about students and other adults?
Production, the crew.
Yeah, yeah. So cast, our cast was on the smaller side this year. We had a cast of about 23, whereas in the past, we've had a cast of like 50, you know, for Lightning Thief, for those of you who saw that. But we still, we still had a crew which was even larger than the cast. I don't know if you saw at the end, when the crew comes up behind the cast to take their bow, we had a crew of like 23, 24, I want to say, something like that. Something in that ballpark. So as many, there were more people on the crew than the cast for this show. And if you saw the number of set pieces and how quickly they were able to construct, do those transitions, that's, that's how we were able to do that, is because of the number of people on the backstage crew. So, you know, upwards of 50 students. Again, to me, that's on the smaller side for production. But, you know, things, things come in waves. And at least, I mean, there's, there's parents and there's also people who are production staff. So you got your musical director, you got, we had an assistant musical director for the show. There's me. There's a technical director, there's our choreographer, there's a band conductor, there's seven musicians, something like that. They really come in for the very end of the process. And then there's also, who am I forgetting? I know I'm forgetting, so, oh, then there's also a set builder, which was a new thing, I found a set builder, set designer, to come in and teach students how to build a bigger set. And that was new for this year. So, I don't know, this many plus a bunch? 10 adults, 15 adults, 10 parent volunteers, tugging, you know, 75 people, something like that.
And again, it's just the numbers and the volume and the movement of everything was just fantastic. And I think if I could, perhaps, if any, maybe one of the students want to tell us, they talked about where they're going next. If you want to take an opportunity and let us know, you know, what are your plans after this? If you have any plans already. Hate to put you on the spot, but.
We're going to do it anyway.
She's going to the spotlight.
So after this, of course, we are having our fest show. But beyond that, I am planning to take the opportunity to participate in theater in college and to just make it my career. My time in the high stage company has really encouraged me to come out of my shell and to really take the chance.
Take the chance, great, thank you very much. Anybody else to add to that? That's fine, thank you.
Any additional, Mrs. Chisholm?
I just want to tell you that my granddaughters loved it on Thursday night. A little, I'd get in the bed on Friday morning, but because it was a little bit later than they normally stay up. But that was very exciting. And I think having Elf at Christmas time was just rocket science. So I think that that was, it was a big draw for that. I think the kids really enjoyed that. Timing was perfect. So congratulations and best of luck in school next year. I hope we'll see you on the big screen someday.
Thank you.
On Broadway.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions? I'm happy to say, I was in attendance on Saturday night's show, and it was a fantastic show. I really appreciated it, I enjoyed Mr. Maron on stage as well. But thank you all. You know, the growth of the theater department and the theater company has been one of the highlights of my time on this committee. So thank you for all the work that you've done.
And before you step away, again, gratitude. So Noah, thank you for your leadership. I know that hours just go into days and days and days. And so thank you for dedicating so much time to the program. I think your efforts were visible this year more than ever. Two sold-out shows, I was there Thursday night, it appeared sold out.
I mean, it was a full house.
Yeah, so I don't know how to define full house or sold out.
Sold out was when we literally sold all the tickets that are available. So there were still some, you know, there was like 50 or 100.
Single seats. So, but again, and, you know, the vibe coming into the, into the event, people were there. So, but again, and you know, the vibe coming into the, into the event, people were there early. I think the show started at seven, if I'm not mistaken, but people were lined up at six. And for the students, Victoria, Allison and Joseph, thank you for your time and energy to make it so successful. 1,800, is that what you said? Total number of people watched? And I know that your tours to the elementary and middle schools were, that was brilliant. Because I think it drew a lot of kids to the shows, particularly on, on that Saturday. So I appreciate the effort there. You know, a thousand dollars is, is real money, but I think it was well worth it because you're inspiring younger kids to follow in your footsteps. So, and then so to Ms. Tifo, Sue, thank you for your leadership. It's been six years or so.
Say it total.
In this role, yeah. In this role.
I'll just say there's no way I've done any of this without Sue.
Yeah, so I would agree, I would second that. But Noah, and you know, your passion and commitment to it is, is remarkable. And so thank you for making the Woburn Public Schools look good at showtime. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thanks to the students for joining us, really appreciate it.
Good night.
And, yeah, you don't, you don't, students, you don't need to stay for that.
You can if you want. But you don't have to.
Good job.
Thanks, Noah. So next on the agenda is a ML School Committee update. Coming up right now is the director of our ML program. She's in her second year here in Woburn, Rania Caldwell, who presented last year right around this time, I think, and has really done an amazing amount of work in a short amount of time. Tonight she'll be able to go through some of the highlights of it. One of the things that, the number of students that are in our program deserve the time and the, the leadership. So I'm grateful to have Rania here tonight to walk through the ML program.
Hello, everyone. It feels like I was here more recently than I was, but I haven't been here for a while. So forgive the amount of updates, but there are a lot. I'm also in full transparency doing double duty. I have my 10-year-old in Ms. Young's office doing her homework. So if you hear any kicking or screaming, that's her. But life happens and here we are. Okay, so you're in charge of the clicking?
Yeah, just beep.
All right. Beep. All right. So we have a number of updates, but we always sort of anchor everything we do in sort of the data of our kiddos and see where we are. So these are numbers, I probably ran them a few weeks ago, but we have currently a little over 700 Els. Today was 704. It's been between 700 and 712 this year. And we have 150 former Els. So former Els are students who were English learners within the past four years, but exited, but we're still monitoring them. I put that number together because Els and Fels make up a lot of subgroups and in our accountability data. So Fels are incorporated with Els or MLs in accountability data, high needs data. They're also part of our compliance work. So we are responsible for both MLs and former MLs for that four years with our compliance as well. So looking at a total of about 850 kiddos that fall into one of those two buckets. Our ML percentage was a little over 15% in October, but Desi hasn't finalized that number in the October Sims yet. We were at 14.1 last year. In terms of staffing, we have 13.4 teachers right now at the elementary level. We have one part-time educator at the, at the Malcolm White. And then eight secondary teachers, split evenly, four at the high school and two at each middle school. And then we are fortunate to have the two additional ML coaches this year, which I'll talk about later. Elementary Tori Coughlin and our secondary coach, 612 Chloe Gill. Next. And then just here's a snapshot of just language groups and country of birth of our students. So Portuguese continues to be our number one language group in the district at 45%, followed by Spanish speakers, Haitian Creole, which we've seen that influx of our Haitian Creole speakers with the students entering from the hotels particularly, and our Arabic-speaking students. There are 37 total languages represented by our MLs and Fels. But I also listed underneath there that there are 58 languages represented district-wide because it's important to remember that we have linguistic diversity outside of our ML students. And, you know, we have lots of languages represented here in Woburn and that is such an asset for us to leverage and recognize as we think about teaching and learning. And then birth country is the same thing, 37% from Brazil. 27% of our MLs are US-born, followed by Haiti and Guatemala. 43 countries are represented by our MLs. And then district-wide, 62 countries are represented district-wide, so MLs and all students. So again, thinking about the cultural and linguistic diversity we have here in the district. All right, so now I'm gonna jump into some celebrations and updates. I brought some Realia for this activity. So this is something that I do, and some people know this about me, but there's a bell in the bottom corner of my slide. And there's a story behind it, if you'll bear with me. I know it's late in the evening. So I once had a superintendent who, when he was excited or proud of something that happened, he would ring a cowbell. He was also 6'5", right? So he can really do the cowbell, right? But I remember thinking, that's like really awesome. Like it was really inspiring. Like he's like standing there ringing the bell because he was really psyched about something. So I said, I'm gonna buy a bell, but I'm not buying a cowbell because, you know, I'm, I'm not that. So I bought a little smiley face bell. And I've had it for years. And the reason we have it is for the same reasons. When we have successes or something we're proud of or excited about, we ring the bell. There are people in this room who have rung the bell. And it's something that just builds energy and it gets us excited about things that we accomplish. So when I was in my former position, I had an ML coach who was also a journalist and a children's author. And she said, Rania, I love the bell, I love the energy, but you have to write down why you ring the bell. I was like, what? She goes, because the work is really hard. And if we don't write it down, sometimes we forget about those wins. So she bought me a bag, says hashtag ring the bell. And I hang it in my office. So when someone rings the bell, we ring the bell. And then I pass them a sticky note or a post-it note and I go, write down why you ring the bell. And we put it in the bag. And then at the end of the year, or when we're having a really bad day or feeling like we're not making progress, we crack open the bag and we read the notes. And it reminds us that there are wins because change is a process, right? It's not an event. So the, the notes remind us that we're making progress. So there's my side story. Here we go. So during the presentation, I hope I inspire you, you can figuratively or literally ring the bell. It'll be here and maybe you'll be inspired to do so. All right. So the first thing I want to share, this is taking us way back to the summer, but we conducted language assessments this summer for the first time for potential English learners. So when a student identifies a language other than English, we're required by law to give them a language assessment to determine if they're, if they need language services. So historically, kids would enter school and then get language tested by the ML teacher when they arrived, which would sometimes take up to a month, depending on how many ML students there are. Because the test can range anywhere from half an hour to 90 minutes as the kids get older and have more English. So we were able to assess over 150 kids this summer. So we had our face staff, we had our, we had ML teachers, we had Tiffany Malendi here in the superintendent's office, like walking people downstairs for testing. It was really like a three-week factory of language testing. Ms. Young was downstairs setting up computers when we had, you know, we had the secondary testing happening. And it really alleviated a lot of pressure when kids got into school because students were tested and students knew, like teachers knew, all teachers, ML teachers and janets teachers knew who their MLs were. So instead of spending that month of school testing, we had teachers in classrooms making, you know, building relationships with kids, getting to know kids and starting services way sooner because then there was just a handful of kids that needed to be tested in each building. So really exciting there. Ring the bell. I'm not gonna ring it. It's in here. All right, the next update is our tiered focus monitoring from Desi. As you all recall, we had a number of findings last year during our TFM. We have done a lot of good work when it comes to the TFM work. We had a progress report due in June. It was a really comprehensive report. That was what most of my presentation was the last time I was here. We had eight different groups of, of leaders in the district on different committees that had different pockets of the TFM. And we submitted that report in June. It was approved with another progress report due in September. We submitted that, that was also approved. And then we have another progress report due in December. The good news is the progress reports are getting much less comprehensive and, you know, there's much less to do. They're really making sure that we're following up on the things that we said we were going to do when we submitted in June. So the people who are part of these teams, we continue to tap into them, right? Everyone's bringing expertise and, and perspective. And we continue to submit those reports to Desi and hopefully they get smaller and smaller and then it's corrected. So ring the bell. All right. Then we have the addition of our ML coaches. I will just say, you know, the ability to develop some capacity to support teachers and instructional leaders in the district by adding two ML coaches has been so wonderful these first few months, just because of the amount of buildings that need support. Every building needs support. But they've been really able to work with teachers and content specialists and curriculum coordinators and principals and working with different teams to bring an ML's perspective and to develop conversations about MLs. And really, we, we obviously want to support teachers and how they can support MLs with ML coaching support. We've developed an SCI website that teachers can tap into as a resource. The coaches have developed a coaching menu. So if a teacher's like, I don't know what an ML coach is gonna do for me, we have like a menu of options that people can pick from so that, you know, it's a little bit less, it might feel a little bit less intimidating. But realistically, we want to develop capacity at the district level, right? Because we want every person to be able to talk to everybody else about MLs, right? It can't just be me, it can't just be me and the coaches, right? We want everybody to be able to have those conversations and it's like building a muscle. The more we build that muscle and practice that muscle, the better we get at having those conversations. So that's been a wonderful addition. The next update is a progress monitoring tool that we just started last week. This has also been part of our TFM. So we were asked, how are we monitoring the language development of our students? So we have purchased Last Links, which is a progress monitoring tool similar to a progress monitoring tool you'd have for English Language Arts or Mathematics. We're, we're assessing our students in the fall, in the spring, in two language domains, reading and writing, just for implementation ease. And reading and writing is 70% of the access score. So if we can gauge where our kids are with reading and writing, we can really get a gauge on where our students will score when they sit down and take the access assessment. One of the huge reasons we picked Last Links was that it uses the same platform as the access test. So kids get that same student experience when they take the progress monitoring that they'll experience when they take the state mandated assessment. So hopefully that also adds a layer of comfort for when students are taking that state mandated assessment, which is part of our accountability. And it also syncs to Elevation, which we'll talk to later. But teachers, building leaders, everybody will have that access when it's synced to Elevation so they can see real-time data where our students are. And it gives an additional data point for our MLs, right? So if they're not scoring well on the ELA progress monitoring, we might see from this assessment that like, hey, but their acquisition is really developing in language, right? So we have an additional data point to make decisions about what the kids need. The next update is LPAC and Adult ESL classes. So the LPAC is part of ML Law since 2017. It comes from the same spirit as the CPAC, which we heard about earlier, really, you know, making sure that ML families have voice in decisions made at the district level. So we have two upcoming meetings, February 12th and May 14th at 6:00 PM. We have the library secured for those, for those meetings. We're, we may add a virtual meeting to those options. In my experience, offering a virtual setting provides a little bit more access to our families who maybe can't get here in the evening. We're just trying to figure out some logistical things around interpretation and things of that nature, but hoping to explore that as well. And then we have Adult ESL classes starting in January. We used to run these classes through a contracted vendor, a contracted person. He was no longer able to do that work this year, so we put it out for a stipend in the district. And I was so impressed by the amount of interest that we received that actually I said, hey, I want all of you, right? Because, you know, when people genuinely want to connect with our families and our ML families, and they weren't all ML teachers, actually only two, two of the five were ML teachers, right? Like I want to develop that, like I want to build that. So if, if we can have, so all those five teachers, they're each taking a, an eight-week session. And if they like it and it's something they want to continue, then we can really look to build upon that next year and offer more courses, right? Now that we have more than one person, we can really be a little bit more creative around how we offer it, if it's in person, if it's virtual. It gives us a lot of, a lot of room to, to be creative. So excited about that. They're eight-week sessions. So the first will start in January and we'll have a beginning level and an intermediate level running at the same time. So we're hoping to get those flyers out to ML teachers tomorrow so they can distribute to families so we can get signups going. Okay, professional development. We'll kick right to the next slide. So this is really an update from last year. Just giving you an update on the types of professional learning and the engagement we had in professional learning around our MLs last year. Last year, we offered the WEDA self-paced modules, which are free to Massachusetts educators because we're part of the WEDA consortium. So there's a number of different courses that they can self-select. They're available whenever they want to take them and you get PDPs for completing them. So this chart just sort of shows the types of courses that teachers engaged in and the total amount of staff that completed courses. We had 350 staff members who were certified in a course, which is amazing. And you can see that the number of courses was split pretty evenly between our elementary educators and our secondary educators. This chart is so exciting to me because, again, people want to work the muscle, right? The more we work the muscle, the muscle, the less scary, right? Or intimidating working with a new student coming into our classroom feels. And people are really working the muscle and trying to learn as much as they can to meet the needs of kids in classrooms. So very excited about that. And then in the summer, next slide, we offered another option for professional learning through the English Learner Portal, trying to provide some high interest courses for educators in the summer. We paid for those courses and we had 30 staff engaged in those professional development offerings as well. So again, people working the muscle, people interested in the PD. Very exciting. All right, Elevation. I love Elevation. I was so excited that Elevation was here. So Elevation is an ML data platform, essentially. So we had the data piece of it before I arrived. The data wasn't really syncing to Elevation, so it wasn't really being used to its capacity or capabilities. Last year, we worked really hard, the tech department, I am so thankful to the tech department because I get an idea in my brain and I call them and they make it happen. I'm like, I think we can make this happen. And they make it happen. So the data is synced, which is great. This year in September, we rolled out Elevation to every single staff member. So every single staff member, principal, leader has access to Elevation this year. And we had, we have 95% of staff active and in Elevation. And that was by mid-September. People were logging in, people were emailing me saying, hey, this kid isn't here, which was great feedback for me because then there's a glitch somewhere and I have to fix it. So that's okay. But people were in. But people were in and noticed, like, "Hey, I got a new student, but the student's not in elevation yet." And I'm like, "Yep." The student gets in power school first, then overnight that student gets to elevation. So teachers are on it and they're excited about it, which is great. That's the data side. Then there's a professional learning strategy side. So we purchased that this year. So we implemented that side this year. So that is available to staff during our choice days. It has over 100 strategies, 35 professional development offerings for teachers. Teachers can apply for PDPs that elevation scores and they can receive. Based on their responses, they can get between one and three PDPs for any one-hour module that they complete. So the purpose of the modules is for teachers to learn about whatever topic it is with MLs. And then they, there's a strategy within the module that then they are asked to teach and reflect upon. The, I think my favorite part of elevation strategies is when teachers engage in the modules, it actually takes their student data and it says, "Here are your students. Here are their levels," right? And it actually connects the strategy to like the students that they have so that they really feel like it's connected to like their day-to-day and like, "These are my kids. This is something that I can try with them." So teachers have provided some great feedback for that. So the next slide just shows some graphics on what kind of ML, the elevation platform looks like. So the top is an example of some of the modules. So, you know, the examples here is activating background knowledge, assessing language and learning using quick checks. And it sort of tells what the educators will learn in that professional learning opportunity. And then they can just start the module whenever and it's accessible to them. They can start it whenever, they can finish whenever, there's no like time, you know, for them to do it. They just, it just tracks their progress as they go. And then the bottom part of that slide shows some example strategies. So there's about 85 language-rich activities. So these activities can be used with all students, right? It really just, you know, increases how students speak, listen, read, and write in classrooms, right? Which we want all students to do. So when you go in, it gives you like a menu and you can filter by reading or writing or you can grade level. But it gives you a video of that activity so you can see it in action. And then, and then it gives you some like sample objectives or what it looks like. And it really guides the teacher through that activity. It also provides graphic organizers for that activity if it's applicable, provides translations for those graphic organizers so teachers can just print them and pass them to students if they need the linguistic supports. So really accessible and again, like connected to their students so people feel like it's not just like, you know, not applicable to the students that they have in their classrooms. My print didn't print. Okay. Grant funding. All right, I can talk to this, this is fine. All right. So what am I talking about first here?
Oh, thank you.
While you're up.
I was gonna say, would you like me to?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Air-conditioned.
Oh, yeah. I thought it was just me because I'm in the hot seat.
No, we're all in the hot seats.
I've been watching every single one.
It was over there like, "It's hot." All right. Thank you.
You got it.
Okay. All right. Well, it's good for me that it's not just the seat. All right.
Had you not watched the room?
I saw Matt and I was like, "Oh, good, it's not me."
I was giggling.
Yeah?
It will move quickly.
All right. So last year, we got some, we were fortunate to be awarded a number of targeted grants, but also competitive grants. So just wanted to give you some updates on how those funds were utilized. The first was proficiency, nope, hold on, Courtney was on this side, okay. The first is the ESL Certification Grant. So this really was about supporting, this was a targeted grant for student, for districts who've received an influx due to the shelter system. So it really was to help support teachers obtain the ESL license. So we initially applied for $6,000 and then there were additional funds. We ended up getting $18,000 in funds. So with those, we were able to license 10 elementary educators with the ESL license. So that grant allowed us to pay for MTLS, do professional development, purchase some resources and books for teachers to have as they were preparing for the MTL. And then if they needed to take it again, we had those funds as well for them to do a retake on the MTL. So 10 educators now have their ESL license at the elementary level because of that grant. The next grant is the Immigrant Children and Youth. That's a grant that's based on numbers, essentially, how many immigrant youth we identify in the district. Last year, that was, we received $24,624. The immigrant grant really has to do a lot with our data tracking systems. And it was something we really looked at, at the beginning all of last year. But there's a very specific definition for immigrant youth in terms of how this grant funded is allotted. So we made sure that we looked at our students and if they met the criteria, made sure that they were tagging them as immigrant because there were a number of students that we were not tagging, which in previous years didn't provide the funding. We might have not met the threshold to receive that grant funding, so fortunate that we were able to do that. With that grant, we were able to purchase elevation strategies this year and secure funding for it for the following year because the grant carries over. And offering those ESL classes and that's some more professional development. And then we also received, this was a competitive grant, the proficiency-based outcomes for languages other than English, which is also a short way of saying that is the Lotte Grant. That was $16,300. That was really focused on providing secondary students with access to the assessment that's, that you can get the seal of biliteracy from. And, and providing, using that data to provide our ML students with access to advanced world language classes. So we're going to look at the upcoming slides for this amazing data because it is really amazing and I'm so proud to share it every time I do. So these are just some graphics that I shared with the Department of Ed when I had to present on the grant. What you'll see on the left in the bar graph is, on the bottom, that's the X-axis, I think? Let me go ask my daughter's doing her math homework. On the bottom of the bars, you have the number of seals that were awarded in Woburn, right? So 31, 26, 31, and then last year, 46. In the bars, you have the number of MLs or Fels who were awarded the seal of biliteracy over the course of time. So as you can see, we've been right around four or five. And then last year, we had 15, which is solely due to the grant funds that we received because the grant provided access. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit more. The line graph is the percentage of seals, so the percentage of the total seal of biliteracies that were given to MLs or Ls, right? So we were around 15%, let's say, and last year, I jumped up to 33% of the seals. That is a, something I have to submit for compliance. When I do my self-assessment for the TFM, they ask me, "How many seals of biliteracy have you awarded to MLs and Fels?" And they ask me, "How many MLs and Fels are in advanced world language classes?" And what was clear when we were applying for this grant was that this was very much an access issue, right? Because our students tend to have pretty full schedules because of their ESL classes or the perception that they just need more English and not necessarily need that development, that advanced language that they might already have. Our students weren't necessarily, they didn't necessarily have access to those advanced world language classes and those were the students who were taking the seal of biliteracy assessment, right? So this grant allowed us to provide that access and it showed us exactly where our students, our students met those high levels, not only in native language, but you need the ELA component as well to earn the seal of biliteracy. So they had both of those. So of the 12th graders, because those are the kiddos who earned the seal, 43% of them, 43% of MLs or Fels were awarded the seal of biliteracy last year. And the note on the bottom is just to note that with these funds, we were able, we tested every kid at the high school, every ML and Fel at the high school. We already have 12 students who took that test as juniors who have already met the criteria for the seal this year. So we're already at 40% of MLs who've met it for this year. And for the following year, because we were able to test the sophomores, that test still counts. So we already have 15 current juniors who've met the criteria for next year's seal of biliteracy, right? So these grant funds have really spanned over a couple of years. Sticking with the same grant on the next slide. So the seal of biliteracy criteria is a level six, right? So you need to reach a level six on the, it's the ACTFOL rubric, which is the American Council of Teachers of Foreign Languages. So you have to get a six in each domain. So it tests reading, writing, listening, and speaking, just like the access test would in English. And you also have to meet the ELA criteria, which is a 472 in English Language Arts. So on the Lotte side, 58% of our students met the Lotte criteria. Of the MLs who took it, 912, okay? So 17 students missed it by just one domain, one point on one domain, most likely writing because writing is really challenging when you're used to, you know, English keyboards, right? It's just a different dynamic with typing. But they can retake that one domain. So we have like a list of seniors that are, this year particularly, like, they can just take the writing, they don't have to take the whole test again, which is great. And as you'll see with the data below, three of the four domains were above the criteria, were above the score you need to get the seal of biliteracy, and that's the average. We had, we had kids who were scoring threes. We had a lot of kids scoring eights and nines, right? And just for context, a world language teacher needs to score a seven on the ACTFOL for context, right? I mean, it's like AP level. So what, what I love about this data is, number one, the average scores are pretty much at the seal of biliteracy level. But what it reinforces is the linguistic assets that our kids are coming with and the background knowledge that they have in their language. What is also a data point I always elevate is that the highest average is in reading, which surprises a lot of people. Because sometimes with our MLs, we think if they can't read in English, that they can't read. And the reality is they're reading at really high levels in their native language. And what that demonstrates to me is that our families are doing double the work because kids are in school all day in English. And for them to maintain their reading and writing proficiency, they have to do double duty to maintain their native language and go to school in English and do all their homework in English and all their work in English. So it's a testament to our families that really work to maintain that native language proficiency. This year, we're extending that assessment. We have leftover assessments, so we're extending it to our elementary and middle school kiddos. We've started giving it a little bit in our ML classes and looking at some of that data coming in for our middle school and our elementary kids, again, as an additional data point to see like, where are our kiddos? Is this a kid that has high native language and is struggling with English? Or is a kid that needs to develop their literacy? Because we have kids who maybe haven't had a chance to develop either, right? Especially at the elementary level. So it's a very exciting, it's very exciting data for me. I put a quote on the bottom that says, "English is a language, not a measure of intelligence," right? Which sometimes is, is hard to remember when we're, you know, when the job is so hard, right? And everything is in English, that our kids are bringing so much to the table. This year's money. Here we go. All right. So we have some targeted grants that we were awarded. One is the Multilingual Newcomer and Homeless Support Grant. So that was for $50,000 based on the number of students that we have here. The asterisks just represents that DESI has approved the grant, but it has to go through the whole funnel to the governor's office or wherever it goes. That should be coming out very soon, but typically that number does not change. So that grant really is to increase our certified staff for translation and interpretation. We can use that funds for basic needs supplies, so toiletries for when kids enter, you know, enter the district, notebooks, backpacks, all of those types of things we can purchase with this grant. And professional development for staff working with newcomer youth. And then as part of the McKinny Vento Grant, we had $20,000 to, again, really focusing on how we can support our families who are enrolling in school. Again, interpretation, translation, a big thing that we can really tap into these grants for to buy, you know, translation earbuds or things of that nature to support our families in schools when there are meetings or events or things of that nature. These are what these types of funds can support with. And then the last slide, we have two competitive grants. One is the Interpreter in Education Training. So again, developing our capacity for internal translators and interpreters. DESI has guidance on translation interpretation and you need to have a credential to interpret meetings or parent meetings or whatever. You need to have an education credential to do that type of work. You can't just be, you can't just be bilingual and walk into a special education meeting and be an interpreter. So this grant covers the expenses to give that course to interested educators. We had 17 people sign up for that course, which is exciting. We're still working through some of the paperwork. They have to be accepted into a program with evidence of English and native language proficiency. We're hoping to run those courses in January, most of them happening during the school day so that teachers don't have to engage in that in the evening hours. And then finally, we were awarded the English Learner Education Support Grant for $184,000. And that's really focused on ESL curriculum, the purchase of ESL curriculum K-12. That was a TFM finding of ours last year. So I'm excited that, obviously, I'm excited that we were awarded that grant. I rang the bell at least 10 times. I actually emailed DESI to say, "I'm just wondering, did we get approved for all of that?" And she said, "We were." So I, super excited. That one was really exciting for me because last year, I went to write that grant and I emailed Ms. Young over here and said, "We are not ready for this." I was like, "I'll write it, but we're not ready." But I didn't write it. And this year, when I sat down to write it, I mean, it was, it was like 17 pages long. But I knew we were ready. I had so much to say. You know, I had so much to add because of all the, all the working groups we've had with the TFM, because of all the district focus areas that we have that have an ML component, because of things like elevation strategies and the PD that our teachers are engaging with, because of the addition of the ML coaches and the ML staff. I had so much to say. And when you submit a grant to DESI, what's, what always makes me feel good when it's approved is that DESI knows you're doing the work. They know you're not just fluffing it up and like, just writing things to get the money. They know you're doing the work. They're not going to give you this money if they don't believe that you're doing the work. So I'm excited with that the most. So that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Corbin, go ahead.
For the McKinney Vento Grant, where is the Welcome Center? It mentions the Welcome Center.
Yeah, so we wrote it, we wrote in to have a welcoming space for, for them, for families that come in. We don't have an established welcome center. We do have a space downstairs that our face staff is also, that's where their, their office is. It's connected to mine. So families do come in if needed and, you know, but not really yet for registration. We're not, we're not quite there.
Is that something that maybe the Community Resource Center that the mayor's office just announced, would we be part of that for?
I think we're, we're in conversation, we're going to go over. So just to flesh out for the public, the city was able to acquire through the Cummings some property at no cost on Washington's, at Washington Street for a couple of years. And we're going to go look at it, I think tomorrow, I guess, I'd have to say. The issue, I mean, quite, to keep going with it... The issue, I mean, quite, to keep going with it is, it's one thing to have a space. And we do have a space downstairs dedicated to Rania and the face staff. So, they have a nice working space downstairs. And it is working that way right now. It's not staffed full-time. So, like, in other words, it's not, yeah. Yeah, so, it's, you know, we've talked for years about having a parent information center. So, that's kind of the, conceptually, what, where we want to point towards.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Wetzel. Oh, sorry. Did you have something you wanted to add?
I did not.
Ms. Wetzel.
Hi. Thank you for this robust update. It was wonderful. I remember when you came last year, I was sitting out there. But it's really cool to hear all the progress that you've made in your time. I had a question, though, about the LPAC meetings. And I asked this too to the CPAC. What can we do as a school committee to help support the LPAC? Aside from, we can obviously spread the word, but what other things can we do?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the LPAC is still pretty much in its infancy. Right? Like, we don't necessarily have, like, elected officers yet on the LPAC. Just trying to get people in. I think similarly to what we heard from the CPAC, trying to get that engagement in. So, if we're talking with families and know that, you know, they have an ML kiddo or a former ML kiddo, like, you know, just encouraging them to, they can reach out to our face staff and, you know, get them connected. And again, we're providing resources, but also trying to develop a level of ownership. So, I think as much as we can get the word out, it's going to benefit our families and our kids.
What's the best email for them, for a face staff member?
Nellie.
Nellie?
Nellie.
Okay.
Yep. I'm happy to provide the email that you can send.
And I believe that's available on the website as well.
Yes. Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Ms. Crowley, and then we'll listen to Ms. Ross.
Uh, Rania, I wanted to congratulate you on the grant. And I'm just wondering, what, do you have a high-quality instructional material in mind? Is there a curriculum out there that's really, like, you can't wait to get?
Yeah, so, I have been on this ESL HQIM cohort through DESI this year. It happens to be every, like, every other Thursday for like, three hours in the evening, which is a really, really hard thing to do with two young kids. But the Massachusetts HQIM criteria for ESL is actually really high. Like, there's a lot of, we're never going to find something that meets all the criteria that Massachusetts has listed out. So, we have vendors coming in actually mid-December. We have four scheduled. Massachusetts is starting to approve HQIM. Right now, they haven't approved any one. It's not on the public website. I've heard from one that have told me they've been approved, but it's not public yet.
But they've made grant money available.
Yes, yes. Well, the grant could be for, like, enhancing curriculum. So, they have a rubric essentially. And they're like, districts make a curriculum work with this rubric. So, we're going to, we're, we're going to meet with the vendors and use the rubric as like, what gives us the best, the closest to it. And then, we'll use those grant funds as their, you know, whatever's left, if there's anything to build upon it. Because it'll be a multiple-year process to get whatever we purchase to meet the criteria that DESI has set.
So, once we have a curriculum, then, of course, the ML instructors and educators will be all doing the same thing.
Yes, exactly.
So, when you assess the children's progress, you will have a standardized way of, and then you can use the data to drive the instruction through the curriculum.
Exactly. If we don't know what the instruction is, it's hard for us to say that the kids are, why, how, it's, it's hard for us to know why the kids aren't making progress.
This is great. So, I, and I also appreciated what you said, that you were building the infrastructure first, getting the ML coaches in place, and you weren't ready. But now, we have the plane built and we can just fly it, as everyone's favorite metaphor. I thought I'd bring that back out of the closet. No, I just, I really appreciate the update and everything that you're doing. And as always, you always have my full support.
Much appreciated.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Ross.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just want to say, excellent report. You did a wonderful job. I really appreciate your energy. I almost feel like you're trying to contain it, which actually makes me happy to see you, like, kind of giddy. I would like to know, I've been thinking about what's in that bag. I would love to at least hear one of two from the bag.
Sure. See what's in here. Haven't opened in a while. Let's see. Let's see. This is it. Oh, this is from our, one of our face staff members, when she received her official certificate for her translation interpretation training course that she showed. So, that's, that's that one. This one. This one might be old. It's about payroll. Geez, it's the other face staff member. All right, hold on. I'm going to grab a different color here. Oh, this is when I completed my first round of observations this fall and made sure that I got all my, all my staff observed before the deadline.
There you go. Good job.
Small wins here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It was a great question. Thank you. Any additional questions for Ms. Caldwell?
Let her get her daughter home. Just please let her be done with her home.
Hopefully, the whole works.
It's a very comfy space.
Thank you, Rania, for your presentation tonight and for the work you've done over the past year and a half. We're lucky to have you. I've said that publicly before. And I think, you know, the ringing the bell, we've heard the, internally, we've heard the term. And I think it's really a great tribute to, to the work that you do.
Thank you.
And I, I do not have a cowbell, but I'm not six-five. I wonder if that happens at the state level.
Giving away who that superintendent now is. Thank you. Looking forward to hearing a lot, about a lot more bell ringing in our future.
A lot more bell ringing. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, feels better.
A little bit.
That brings us to our redistricting update. Dr. Crowley.
Sure. So, I, there's no presentation. I just was asked to kind of keep this on the agenda to provide an update. And so, I have a few different parts to it and happy to answer any questions. I don't want to steal any thunder from the ECP subcommittee report out, though. But I will say that we have selected a consultant. Their name is Sandborn Geospatial. It's a national company, but they have a strong presence in Massachusetts. So, they have a Boston office. And they redistricted Plymouth, Lexington, Shrewsbury. I think they might have done Bill Ricker. And so, they have a very strong reputation. We've had multiple calls unofficially with them. And then, we had a kickoff meeting with them on a Zoom earlier this week. We are in the process of then validating our data and getting it to them, if this sounds familiar from last spring. There is a process to this. We want to make sure that we are providing them the correct information and then work with them to come up with the, what we want as a committee to decide is the best option moving forward. I will say that the, the redistricting is complicated. Obviously, we did this last year. And I don't want to state the obvious, but, and I, I don't want to step on Ms. Wetzel's toes here. But we have thirteen classrooms currently occupied by the preschool. So, four at the Shamrock and then nine at the Reeves. And so, and they're, they're not going away. Like, these, the little people keep coming to Woburn. And it's, the numbers at the preschool keep growing. And so, we've been trying, and again, I, to problem-solve the preschool this fall. And redistricting is hand in glove, to some extent, with the preschool. Because if, if we're able to magically find a preschool option, we now have thirteen more additional classrooms that students can then move into. And so, I would say that, based on what you've told me, we are redistricting. So, whether we redistrict with the current configuration or if we redistrict having that additional space, that's going to be a factor that will influence how many students are placed and placed where. So, that, that process, as I said, is, is officially underway. We have meetings booked, the way that, this company, it's Sandborn. It also goes by AppGeo. So, that, that, there's a diff, like, different divisions of it. So, I just, I'm saying that because if at some meeting I say, "We're working with AppGeo," I don't want you to be confused. And we have meetings booked all the way through February. But there also is an advisory group that they ask to be formed, so that it's beyond just a small number of people, that there's other folks looking at plans and poking holes. There's public forums that are attached to this. And so, it'll be a much broader process. We have a little bit, we, not a little, we have more time than we did last spring. So, that is the redistricting update.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. Crowley regarding redistricting? Ms. Wetzel, that.
Oh, you get, Ms. Crowley, I think you're.
I called on you.
Okay. All right. I'm going. I had a couple that popped into my head. One, the configurations. I know we obviously have the ECP with the thirteen classrooms. Could the consultant look at two different configurations? Like, one with the current ECP staying where it's at and then another one with it out? And if they did that, would it cost more money for them to look at that?
The quick answer is that they are, they are able to do that. Ms. Young's raising her hand, so I want to.
I would just keep in mind that we don't, that the number is thirteen today.
Right.
But you don't actually have room to add room into any of your current spaces. And so, I, I guess I say it just as in, like, I'm sure we can make the all different options. But to keep in mind that that number doesn't actually fit where it is. So, it would, it would be a lit, it would be a little bit, I guess, not as simple as just like, if they stay where they are, if they don't actually got room to add where they are.
To where they are?
Yeah.
That makes sense. And then, the other question I had was in terms of, like, the stakeholder involvement. When can we expect to see that? Like, I know right now, they're still looking at the maps and stuff, but when is a good time to start?
Early January is what I've, mid, middle of January.
And when we'll start involving community members and things like that?
Right.
And then, from there, and I think we talked about it at our last meeting, it's how many months before we have the plans? That's my last.
Have, sorry?
How many months before we have, like, the plans that we would look at in terms of, you know, like, we had last time?
Oh, I.
Page one, two.
Yeah, I, I think we'll be looking at plans in March and April. I, when I was asked, what, when do we want to have this finished? May was my answer, mid-May, so that there's time to make any adjustments.
Perfect. Thank you.
I was just going to say, I think that the, that the timeline more is related to the mid, mid-May final point. I think that kind of it's hard to gauge necessarily what will happen in between the time. But the, but the timeline is really working off of a decision being able to be made by May. I just don't want to commit otherwise. I think that the one commitment is, is mid-May is when that would be done.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Yep, sure. Ms. Crowley, go ahead.
So, I anticipate the ECP is going to render a recommendation to build portables at the Reeves, correct?
That's correct.
If we can't get the portables for the Reeves, then are we still looking at the Linskett? Or are we still looking at an in-district, like, redistrict situation? Like, what, what are we going to do? Are we going, how are we going to handle the ECP problem if we're not able to obtain the funding necessary for the portables? Is Linskett still an option? Like, is that still an idea floating around?
Are you asking me?
I guess, I guess I'm saying rhetorically is, are we really back to where we are before? Because we still don't have a, a space for the ECP. And even if we, okay, so, if we reconfigure kids to take the space capacity issues away from the Hurlwyman, the Goodyear, and the Malcolm White, we can do that. But the, what the alternative is, if we don't get the portables, then I'm thinking the next step would be to build a new school. Right? So, then, we would be redistricting now and then redistricting upon the construction of a new school and just like, hope that we have enough space to continue to run the schools. Is that right? That's, okay. I'm just kind of like, setting the framework that we really have to be looking at very difficult decisions. And it might be to, like, really be creative with the ECP. Because we may not, we may just be able to work with the resource that we have. We may not be able to, you know, have extra funding for things. I guess I'm just setting that tone right now.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Mariner, and then we'll go back to this one.
I think I'll just, again, it's kind of like Ms. Crowley was setting the tone. It's still redistricting, ECP, all these issues. There's still not a concrete plan for a North Woburn School, combining the Linskett and the Alta Vesta. Redistrict now or later. And my other concern and question was, how much was this consultant awarded financially? We haven't heard a price tag on that yet, have we? Do you have a price?
I, I can get that to you.
And it just, you know, last time we paid it, it kind of washed itself away. And I just, again, it's, if it's going to happen, mid-May, which is difficult at best, but are we still rushing this whole redistrict plan again, like we did last year? We're just rushing it a little bit earlier. Mr. Chairman, you remember all the emails we got last year regarding it? Even if some of these answers were, some of these questions were, you know, done mid-May. There's something to the same concern. What about the fifth graders? What about this case? Case-by-case scenarios? Then we're back into June. So, it's just, it's, and I said it, you know, at the last meeting, the redistrict, the ECP, the North Woburn School, all those mixtures of everything, it is all on the plate together. And it's just a, it's, it's a mess, I guess I could say. But I'm glad to see we have a consultant. I'm glad to see he's working with current, accurate plans and numbers and, you know, figures in front of him are them, Sandborn or AppGeo. So, they're, we're ahead of that. So, ball, the ball's rolling there. How much are they getting? What are they going to get? And can we have a, you know, a timeline and stakeholders involved as to when they want to meet and what they want to do? You know, it's, it's holiday break coming up around the corner here. It's the new year next year. And it's just, the clock is ticking. And it's, it's going to be the same issues we had last year come up before us sooner rather than later, hopefully, than later, hopefully, once we get the word out. We don't want to be sitting here in May and June juggling the balls again. We want to have something before May or June that redistricting is gonna happen, including the ECP, non-including the ECP, with portables, without portables. It's just, there's so much taking place there. And then to Ms. Crowley's point as well, we're, you know, the North Woburn Schools. If we do that, are we gonna redistrict now and then again, once we have a new North Woburn School? It's just a mix of everything. So I just want to make sure that everything's kind of prioritized and put in a, in a good order, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm, and then we'll go back to Ms. Wetzel.
I just, I'm sure that what we paid for last year is gonna be incorporated this year, and I'm sure that things are not gonna be, we're not gonna recreate things that we already know the answers for. And I'm, I'm sure that we will use the fifth graders and factor that in to keep them where they, you know, should they choose to stay at the school that they're in. That would be part of that whole thing too, because we pretty much promised that last year. I don't think we're gonna come back on that promise. And as long as we can get a timeline, hopefully by our first meeting in January, second meeting, that we can put out there that this is what we're going to do. I don't think we should stop on the building of the new North Woburn School. I think that that's something we should continue to pursue and just work on that. And if we can get a commitment from the city that we can do the portables, I think it should be done anyway, so that we can have room for growth and have that be at the Reeves School and continue to do that. But we need a commitment, and that could take a big burden off what we have to do. But, and that should be done sooner than later. So that's my two cents, but I just think that we need to push forward hard and fast. And I know it's gonna be very tight this year for money, but these are necessities that we have to do, so.
And I should just point, for clarity occasion, we have had early conversations with the city, with the mayor regarding ECP solutions, so we're continuing to work through that.
But we all need to know what that commitment is gonna be for them.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Ms. Wetzel, you have something?
Oh, yeah, just in terms of the ECP task force, which we'll get into later, I know, down the line, but to Ms. Crowley, to the chair, they, we did look at the Linskit as well as a bunch of other buildings. Did we do an in-depth study on any of them? No, but we did talk to Mr. Burnham and our facilities director, and there was a lengthy list of things that would need to be done to that school in order to make it ECP-ready. Fairly expensive at that, probably, I don't, I don't want to speak on numbers, but expensive. So we did kind of go through every building inside of Woburn, as well as locations that weren't school buildings inside of Woburn that might be, we might be able to use before coming up to the solution on the modulators. But, and it's been mentioned too, redistricting and modulators and all this stuff is a big jenga puzzle from Mr. Moren's point, so I do think there's a lot going on. But I think, to Ms. Chisholm, we need to push forward. And if we do build these new buildings, consultant mentioned that you redistrict every 10 years anyway, and you definitely redistrict when you build a new building. So it would make sense to do it then anyway, and it's kind of a natural transition, and these new buildings aren't gonna pop up tomorrow or even in the next couple of years. So most of those kids will probably have their elementary time inside of the building they're at. That could mean a sibling doesn't go to that building, but then they get the opportunity to go to a new space. So I think that would be exciting for them. And the modulators can be used as an asset to the city as well. They can be used, like the school that we went to tour where we saw these modulators, they actually used the modulators while they were building a new building. It cut down the costs of building because they were able to build faster, and now they're looking to get rid of them and sell them to somebody else. So we could potentially, as we're building these new buildings, we're gonna need space for these kids to go. Maybe we use it as that, or I know City Hall's been looking to get remodeled, we can use it as swing space for that. So there's definitely a lot of ways that we can use the modulators that don't just involve the ECP for an interim solution before we have the new building. So I think it's important to keep that in mind.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel. Ms. Crowley?
And through the chair, to Ms. Wetzel, I assume that the cost to renovate the Linskit, for instance, would be exorbitant as compared to building, to buying portables, which would be an investment. So you would have sort of repair and renovation of the Linskit to get it ready for the ECP, only to maybe build a new school in the future, and all those renovations may not be that necessary versus having portables, solving the ECP problem, and then maybe down the line, not having to build an ECP because we have portables at the Reeves. So, you know, in a way, it would be a fruitful investment to do the portables now, redistrict with the portables, so we have an ECP space, and then you could look at the new building situation as just building a new middle school or a new North Woburn School without the ECP, which could be in the range of $30 to $50 million. So you would think that that would be a good taxpayer investment.
And my, just before we get into a back and forth regarding ECP, we do have an update with the ECP Subcommittee coming up on the agenda, and we can revisit this at that time, but yes, I hear that, that point as well.
But I really, I thought it was important to intertwine it, because to talk about redistricting and then later, oh, here, there's the ECP Task Force. So I really appreciate Ms. Wetzel willing to give an update now during this discussion. And my last comment was to really Mr. Moren's comments, that we thwarted the redistricting plan last year and voted to start it this year. It is happening, and it is happening on time, and the administration is doing everything that they can to keep the train running. And I'm sure that admin is going to give us a timeline and a plan to get this done. But I in no way am backing down from my very strong opinions that we need to redistrict, create a separate space for the ECP to alleviate the serious unsafe space issues, maybe not unsafe, that's not the right word, not the best education environments in those three schools, and this is something that needs to be done, because it needs to be done. So I just wanted to make that position clear.
Thank you, Ms. Crowley, Mr. Austin, then we'll go back to Ms. Corbin. Mr. Austin, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to confirm, are, is our current consultant utilizing the information that we received from our previous consultant? I feel like I didn't hear that, yes or no, I just, I wanted to confirm that.
Well, the, all of the information this year is different.
So it's.
So, but a lot of the, a lot of what we've learned from last year will accelerate our ability to answer questions with the, like, students, let me just be very, like, eighth graders here at the Joyce are now at the high school. So the student information is different, but we now, we've learned a lot about what the consultant will require of us. We've learned, like, does the fifth grader, should they stay? We have learned that our maps need to be accurate being fed to the consultant the first time, so we have those, so that, like, there were a lot of learning that happened that I think will be helpful to, to this process, and we can use some of that information that was generated last spring.
So it almost sounds like we started from scratch with a, maybe, so let me finish my thought. It almost sounds like we started from scratch with a little bit of insight from previous, but we're not utilizing his material, anything.
Yeah, I would say that in the initial meeting that we had, there were a lot of questions that would typically have taken several weeks, that we already could provide them with information. There was an awful lot that, that we were able to take from what we had already done, so that we are starting in a much different place. So I would not say that this is, that this is starting from the beginning. There are obviously some changes in enrollment, because kids move along, but with respect to complexities with special education programs and district lines and nuances with maps, I think because we had redistricted in so long, we were constantly getting curveballs that people, that nobody could anticipate, and we had so many of those that that information, we're already in a very different place.
Okay, well, this question was just a question inquiry, just to confirm, just wanted to allow the public to know a little more. Second, second statement, kind of piggybacking off of Mr. Moren, just to, again, clarify, so we're looking to get a final product in May. It sounds like it's similar, you're saying no, I see you shaking no.
I think that the point is that you will, that, but the decision should be made by May, that you'll have all the information so that you can be done in May. This is how the time, that the timeline we gave them was that we want to be able to have your decision done by mid-May. Not that like you're gonna get all the information to start making your decision mid-May, you'll be done with your decision by mid-May, so that we have the second half of May and all of June to be implementing. Mid-May would be, we would be done.
So we'll start seeing information, you have an idea what month? If not May?
I think that that, what we were saying was that what we know is that we told them that this is when we want to be done, and so what we didn't want to do is misspeak on the date of when you could see things. But we, it's that between the course of what we've started to do now, and then what we said was this is the time that we need to be done, meaning you have voted and you have completed everything, is mid-May.
So it almost sounds like we're repeating the cycle, like, we're going backwards. Like, if, when we first got wind of this, it was, I'm bad with months, but it was at least several months into the new year, and looking to redistrict that same year for the, for the following school year, 24, 25. So help me understand, are we looking to possibly have information, what, March, maybe? I'm throwing ideas, March to finalize the decision in May to redistrict for '25, '26? Is that's what I'm understanding? I'm kind of clarifying, because I'm a little.
So I don't, I, the quick answer is, I would expect that you'll be able to start seeing real maps and lines in February, March to begin that, that conversation. But exactly when, I don't know. We're gonna, we've submitted some information to them. They need to geocode it. So, and then there'll be conversations at meetings like we had last spring, where we're looking at different scenarios and making choices.
So February, ideally, give, give or take four or five months to give people the heads up that we're gonna redistrict and possibly people lose their jobs again. I'm just trying to confirm and, and understand, because it almost sounds like we're back in the same position. I hear that we, individuals want to redistrict like now, but it's almost like hurry up and wait. Moving, again, February, school year is already pretty much done from most kids' standpoint, especially seniors, they're already finished. And so I'm just, I'm just processing here, I'm a slow processor at five, but it just sounds like we're in the same boat last year. We're, with a give or take a few months. It just, to me, makes more sense to wait the following school year. I know that's, that's against the majority, but we still gotta be mindful that we have lives at stake that we're gonna make a decision for '25, '26, and, and '25? That's what I'm understanding?
Hope so.
So I think it might behoove us, we will be hearing more about some of the specifics that you're asking about as we move on. My understanding is we'll have a better sense of timeline in January, when the consultant has been able to work through some of this. We, you know, ultimately, a redistricting vote comes down to this body. If we determine that it is not time for this, then that is a vote that we can take as a, as a collective body. I appreciate the input, and I appreciate concerns, and we do want to make sure we get this right, and this is important to a lot of people. So I appreciate the input.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, because I think a lot of people in the community, probably similar to me, process not as fast as others, so I think being able to ask questions without offending anyone, being able to ask questions without stepping on toad, I think is healthy. This is a good conversation, just to throw back and forth. So that's kind of what I'm doing, just kind of inquiring, because I, because I just want to make sure I know, and being prepared myself, I wasn't ready to begin this.
I would say that none of us were. But I appreciate that. And am I correct in my recollection, so the consultant that we have contracted with does have a fairly robust plan for public engagement?
Yeah, so there's a big community piece. There'll be stakeholder nights, surveys that were referenced, you know, we, things that we were not able to, you know, do last year because of the truncated time. And they've done this in multiple districts, and I think they've, clearly they've done it well to allow for, for all voices to be heard in the process.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corbin, you have a question?
Yep, just, not technically the form, but because Linskit came up and the exorbitant expense of retrofitting it for a preschool, was there any possibility of making it so that there were, was more parking and more accessible? I mean, that seems like a static thing that would be a real issue if one were to discuss putting a pre-K at the Linskit. I don't know if that was, is, any.
That's the problem, I think.
Yeah. Ms. Wetzel, does this come up in your, in your?
I'm pointing to Ms. Wetzel, because.
Parking came up, playground came up, yeah, just a plethora of things that came up. And like Ms. Crowley said too, you'd be fixing a building then to potentially make a new one. So how much money do we want to spend on something that we're not gonna need? Whereas a modular could be useful for quite a long time.
Yeah.
So it did. That was one of the biggest, that was probably one of the first things that came up, was parking in the playground, and then how you access the playground, especially when we're talking with a lot of the teachers, they had like wish lists of things that would make sense for an ECP, and safe access to a playground, and safe drop-off and pickup were very high on the list.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Unless there's anything further on this, I would recommend we move into Subcommittee Reports, and then we can revisit our ECP discussion with, with Ms. Wetzel's minutes. Okay. So, finance and personnel.
We did meet on November 13th, and we will need a vote on our invoice packets. Packet one was for $1,899,003. Packet two was for $124,104.52. Packet three was $172,548.03. And packet four was for $1,357,180.86. So I need a motion on those.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Opposed?
And what came before us too was the lunch monitors.
I need to accuse myself, excuse me.
Okay, okay. Lunch monitors have had not had increase in their hourly pay. So they are very much appreciated and valued by the principals and by our children. They are invaluable for recess and assistance during the lunch period. The recommendation from the Subcommittee was to increase their pay by a dollar, starting in January. Finance Director Alex Dizio ran the numbers, it would be an additional $5,000 to $6,000. But a vote from the full committee is needed to make that happen for January.
Okay.
So just do, I mean, I'll make the motion to increase the lunch monitors by a dollar an hour.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Corbin.
I am in favor of this. I was just curious why it comes up now and not at either of the budget times.
Yeah, no, I'll give you the real answer.
Yes, please.
The, the Friday tours that I go on with other elected officials put us in proximity to lunch monitors, who made the point to say, I don't know who to ask, but I, I'm thinking it might be you. And they do a great job, and so.
So they advocated for this.
They advocated, yeah. And so, yeah, that's kind of how it, how it came out.
All right, perfect, thank you.
And I would, I would also tell you, you know, the increase, I mean, it, it's nice to increase, we still need lunch monitors, so it's really, you know, we are running into some situations at different schools where we, we're not having the coverage that we really should have, and so if anything we could do, like we increased the substitute pay, you know, a few years ago, anything we can do to make these types of jobs more appealing, I think would go a long way.
Ms. Wetzel?
I was just gonna add, I was on that Friday tour, actually, when a lunch monitor at the Malcolm White came up and asked you directly for a raise, it was amazing. And actually, to note, they're not only do a great job, but the kids love them. We went outside to recess, the kids are running up and saying hi, and new names, like, really top-notch, so, yeah, I totally support this.
Thank you. Any further questions on this motion? All right. All in favor of the motion to increase lunch monitor pay by a dollar an hour, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And then we do have to have a motion to, we do some budget transfers that we haven't done like in a long time. It, the total is $1,078,631. It's for salary, just to keep the right people in the right schools, so that when we look at it, it'll be correct. So that's, we need, we do need a motion to approve that.
Okay. I get a motion to approve? Could you restate the?
We, all right, so we need a budget salary adjustment transfers for $1,078,631.41.
Okay.
So we'll make that motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
All right. Discussion on that motion. Mr. Moren.
So just putting people where they belong.
Yes, yes.
They're just out of the boat, they're just getting in there, and it's gonna cost this much to make it happen.
Because it was like when, when principal transferred to another school, the salary might have been a little bit less, so it's just, so when you look at it, you'll find the right people, the right buildings, and the lines actually.
Reconciliation.
This isn't costing any additional money to.
No, no. Bottom line is.
Fix it.
Fix it.
All right. Any more on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Done.
All right. Community relations.
We met today, and I'll have the report next night.
Great, thank you very much. All right. Curriculum and data trends.
We don't have a chance to meet, Mr. Chairman, although the only item we had at the time was gonna be someone's concerns on the AP exams. If anybody has anything else, please let me know.
Okay. Thank you for that. Ms. Young, did you have anything that you needed to get through curriculum?
I do have some programs that will need to have, that will need approval, and then I have program studies to ask for by the end of January.
Okay, so we'll make sure to get those meetings on the books. Thank you. Policy.
We have not met, but I'm hoping to squeeze one in by the end of the year, if I can.
Okay, thank you. Resources and capital planning.
We have not met.
Okay. Student services and achievement.
Yep, we met on 12/6 at 9:00 AM in the superintendent's conference room. And then just a brief update of what we talked about, Greg Woodland has been appointed the interim elementary coordinator for the district, and we currently have the reading specialist position posted and are hoping to gain some interest. Tons of professional development have happened this fall. Teachers have been really excited about everything that's been going on. A lot of it's been literacy-based. We worked with Wilson Training, Melissa Orkin, Ellen Bloom, lively letters, so a lot of really wonderful training is happening inside of our schools for our staff. And student population, since the start of the year, we've had 57 new students move into the district, that include two from out of district, and approximately a third of the And approximately a third of the students that have moved in are in a specialized program. And some of those students also need one-on-one professionals. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that's good to know, thank you. So, that would be just special education students. I'll fix that in my notes. Yep. Always keeping me on my toes. It is, it's good, it's good. We had to open a new gang classroom with two additional students inside of that. And we are monitoring the early childhood program of the ECP as we expect we might have to open another classroom this winter. And we have posted positions for the extended school year or that's our summer school, ESY. And we posted about six weeks ago to start looking for staff for those positions this summer. And on a budget note, a meeting with Dr. Crowley, Charlie Doherty, and Mayor Concanon was held on October 30th to discuss budget implications and positions that we might needed to add due to the increased number of students. And transportation, we are monitoring it carefully but appear on track and we adjourned at 9:40 AM.
Thank you very much. Building and capital planning, I don't believe we've met. And that brings us right back to Ms. Wetzel for the ECP Task Force.
Yes.
Which we have previewed.
We have, yeah, we talked a little bit about it. I just first wanted to start out by giving a big shout out to the members of the task force. Everyone really went above and beyond the call of duty to participate in this. And so, thank you and I'm just gonna name everybody off. So, we had Mr. Burnham and he's our facilities director. We had Ms. Jones, she is an ECP teacher. Ms. Mattinson is an OT for the ECP. Ms. Mulkeren is an ECP teacher. Ms. Murphy is the ECP coordinator. And then, of course, we had Dr. Crowley, Ms. Ryan, and then Ms. Wade, who is an ECP parent as well as a teacher, an ECP teacher in a private school. And everyone was just absolutely fantastic. So, if you're listening, thank you. I really appreciate the hard work that you've done. And then just the notes, I'm probably gonna read these. I think it might be important if I do so, just given the conversations we had today. So, we started off the meeting with a budget discussion for an ECP relocation and what that would look like. So, Dr. Crowley met with Mayor Concanon, Chief of Staff Chris Kissel, City Auditor Charlie Doherty, and School Committee Chair Andrew Lipsit to discuss the idea of modulators being used for the ECP. The group emphasized the need to explore all possible options before committing funds for an ECP expansion into modulators. In previous meeting minutes, I had noted a breakdown of locations that we looked at inside of our city, as mentioned earlier, both inside of our schools as well as inside looking at commercial real estate and things like that. And we couldn't find a feasible option that wouldn't cost the city a dramatic amount of money. So, that is why we came up with the idea of the modular classrooms. Unfortunately, some of us were able to tour some of these modular classrooms. So, the district explored all available space options for an ECP and did not find anything suitable. So, on November 8th, Chair Lipsit, Mr. Austin, Dr. Crowley, and myself toured 28 modular classrooms at Nauset High School. These modulators were originally from Lincoln Public Schools and Nauset used them as they built a new high school. This allowed them to keep the school open and reduce costs by completing the project faster. The tour was fantastic. We all really liked the space. We were actually able to speak with educators inside of the space and they loved it. It felt like any normal building. It's not like you walked into something that didn't look like a school. We asked about heating, we asked about the electricity, we asked about Wi-Fi, all of those functions, just like you would inside of a building like this. So, that was all really great to hear. And you'll notice in my notes, I had a link to the modulators. So, there's a lot of pictures that you can find on there if you're interested in what those particular modules look like. So, if you haven't been inside, it's nice to see kind of what they look like. And those pictures entailed the construction of them, because you pour foundation and then it sits on top of that. There's a lot of groundwork that goes in to getting modulators before you actually get the modulators. I'm not the best person to speak on that as I know little about it, but I do know you pour foundation, you have to have plumbing and electricity and everything go to those modulators. So, there are pictures there that you can look at. And during that meeting, we continued our discussion around modular classrooms and if we thought those were an appropriate solution for the ECP. And we also determined what kind of level of urgency we thought this was. Did we think this was something that was urgent or something we can put on the back burner? And unanimously, we said this is an urgent solution, or an urgent situation. The ECP is outgrowing the space that it's in. We might have to add another classroom in the winter. Where that classroom's gonna go is uncertain. There isn't any space at the Reeves. I don't believe there's space at the Shamrock. We've discussed in meetings and it's written in my notes that maybe this ECP classroom ends up in another building entirely. And then you're looking at an ECP split between three buildings. You're looking at staff having to move between three buildings. You're looking at, we can't just have one segregated ECP classroom not attached to at least somebody else. So, then do we have to move another classroom so at least there's a pair? I don't have those answers, but I do know, and the committee came to this decision, a solution of modulators would solve that. If we can get the modulators, we can then take the classrooms that are currently divided from two school buildings, make them into one. Then you have the support staff that are all there. Everybody's in one building. Everyone can work together and communicate and have a sense of community that right now is broken because it's divided into two different buildings. So, if we're able to do that with modulators, the committee said that's the solution. Nothing else seems to be able to work. That will get us to the point where we can then build new buildings and figure out a long-term solution for the ECP. And then, like I said earlier, those modulators can be used as an asset to the city as they're looking at other construction projects that they might need to use. We talked about on the committee too, where we thought the ECP modulators should go. Initially, the conversation really revolved around having the modulators at the Reeves just because the predominant, the most amount of kids are right now at the Reeves that are in the ECP. However, thinking of it long-term as maybe a space the city can use for if they rebuild City Hall or other things like that, maybe it makes sense to make it at a more centralized location. So, the idea of the Kennedy came up. So, we didn't come up with a recommendation for where the modulators sit. I think a study would need to be done on where the best grounds are and what makes sense from a facility perspective. But I do think that we, our subcommittee is very open to location. They just really all want to be together. When you ask the teachers, this was maybe meeting two or three, what is your goal? Like what is your ideal space look like? And it was really thoughtful to listen and I wanted something that was safe for kids to come in and out, something that's safe, a drop off, something that has got a safe space to go for recess and it's easy to get in and out of as well. Ideally, it's all enclosed so that way kids that might be sprinters aren't trying to run off prior to getting inside of a fenced-in play area. Appropriate-sized classrooms and storage was another big thing that came up. The little people need the most amount of things, it seems like. So, they are very adamant and hopeful that their space can contain ample storage as well for all the necessary equipment and supplies that they need. And then I guess costs. So, these were noted in a previous meeting, but we would need roughly $5 million for the modulators, ballpark figure, but that seems to be about accurate. And we would need to, again, pour the foundation and renovate these modulators. I will say though, the modulators that we did see at Nauset High School, several of those are already fixed for a preschool. So, they have the appropriate-sized classrooms and such. So, that would cut down on the renovation costs because they're already equipped. And then we need to talk a little bit about what happens without modulators, which I've kinda touched on. But the, basically, I'm gonna read this, likely the ECP would be divided into more than one school. It would present a lot of challenges to with people who are peers, so kids not on IEPs that wanna come to the school. If we're divided into two schools, then we're divided into three schools. I'm a parent looking to pay to send my kid, but I don't know what building they're gonna go into. It could detour parents from wanting to send their child to our ECP program. And that's a paying spot and we're not in compliance as it currently stands with the number of paying peers. So, we really can't afford to lose anybody because we don't have a location. So, that was another big thing that we talked about. And so, a motion was made by Mr. Burnham and seconded by Ms. Mulkeren to recommend to the full school committee to further look into the acquisition and deployment of modular classrooms for an interim solution for addressing the ECP space. And the ECP Task Force recommends using modular classrooms for the ECP until a permanent solution is created. The task force is open to a location based on appropriate infrastructure and space at the current schools. And I apologize, but I forgot to mention Mr. Matt Comyness as a member of the ECP Task Force. I'm sorry. I wrote it down and I forgot. So, I just wanted to make sure he got a shout out as well. And then lastly, but something that we always kept in the back of our mind as a task force was, I'm just gonna read it, "The ECP location is one piece of the redistrict puzzle. It's also one piece as we look at new school buildings. All of these are interconnected and decisions made about one will affect another. Communication and planning must happen side by side to ensure success." And we adjourned at 3:52.
Thank you very much. And please, thanks to the whole ECP Subcommittee for a lot of really good work and a lot of really good brainstorming and thinking. So, we appreciate it. Any questions for Ms. Wetzel?
I'll make a motion that the Woburn School Committee endorse fully the recommendations made by the ECP Task Force.
Second?
Do I have any discussion on that motion? Seeing none? Oh, I have some.
I just wanna express that, I went to a task force meeting and Ms. Wetzel did a fantastic job and the conversations that people were having centered around the kids. And I learned a lot, actually. I'm really glad that Ms. Wetzel led this group. I thought she did a great job and I was really impressed. And I think that their recommendations to support the modular classrooms in a central location that's safe for kids is a fantastic recommendation and I fully endorse it 100%.
Okay, thank you.
You'll be seeing how I vote.
We'll be shocked.
Mrs. Chisholm, go ahead.
I just, I think the idea of the Kennedy really kinda smacked a little bit of interest because it would be different for timing for the kids to arrive too. And I think that that would be just really a nice spot to be in that it would absolutely free up the elementary space. And we did have modules at the Clapp School when we were building the Goodyear. So, and I think that that's something we can look back on and we were really nervous about that too because it took up the playground and we thought that everybody was gonna go crazy and we lived through it and survived. My first classroom. Yeah, see? And look at, I'm still here.
All right. Anything further on the motion? Mr. Morley?
I just, I appreciate all of Ms. Wetzel's committee's work and I just hope they've exhausted other avenues, commercial buildings, school buildings, city-owned properties for, again, and Ms. Young, you're right, the portables got good use at the Clapp, couple of years rather than them and off they went. If they're gonna come in long-term, be used for something else, the maintenance, I don't know if we have an electrician even onboard yet, if that's gonna be used, our electrician or outside contractors, but it's just, I really wanna be sure that you've exhausted all of, other than portables, other than modular locations. And I think, as Ms. Chisholm stated, we went through this before, back and forth, we should and we shouldn't, we can't and we can't. And it's just one of those things that, you know, once we commit and then, you know, two weeks later someone says, "Oh, by the way, you could've used," and, you know, we're back behind the eight ball again. So, I'll vote in favor of this tonight in hopes that, you know, everything's been exhausted otherwise. It just feels like you've done a heck of a lot of work behind the scenes on this and to make it happen. And again, prioritizing it, you know, put that first before the redistricting, before the Northwood Schools, it's gonna be difficult. I guess I'll be in favor of the recommendation tonight to make this somewhat go forward anyway.
Okay. Ms. Cormier, go ahead.
I am a big fan of the modular portables, whatever we call them. I have been working out of one for almost a decade. I don't, nobody can tell me how old it is. It's at least two decades old and it's still standing and it is a living space with a fully functional kitchen, bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera. So, they probably make it even better now. So, it's a great investment, I think, and can be used in so many ways. So, I am a fan. Thank you.
Ms. Wetzel, go ahead.
So, a portable's lifespan is roughly 25 years from my understanding. However, with proper maintenance and if it's built on a sound foundation, I'm sure their longevity is even longer. And we did look at every single option. The first meeting, we actually spent talking about every single school that we have. When Mr. Burnham brought floor plans in and we talked about how this would work or how it wouldn't work. And if we did move the ECP here, then where would all these kids that are in these buildings go and how that, we could shuffle that? And weren't able to make sense of it. Some really creative ideas were actually tossed around and nothing seemed to stick. We worked with Ms. Casey Hagerty in the mayor's office in economic development to try to find commercial space that would be suitable, but the rents were sky-high, very, very high. And then the cost of construction, also very high. And then any space we looked at, it would be, we'd have to build the playground expensive and then we'd have to figure out a safe pickup and drop off. So, none of those options made sense. And it's a great question, Mr. Moran, and I agree. It wasn't necessarily the outcome I think any of us thought we'd come to or would come to. I'm happy that we did and I'm proud of that outcome because we exhausted every single other thing that we could have before we came to it. Because I understand that it comes with a price tag and I know that's difficult and I know the city has a lot of things they spend money on. But I do know that this solution is going to help a lot of kids and it's gonna help our district and it's gonna help us perform a better redistrict. And we're gonna get the kids into buildings that properly fit them. And I think that's fairly important.
Okay. Mr. Burnham, go ahead.
I know you wanted to debate it, just the $5 million factor, was that a concrete amount? Was it a ballpark figure from someone? And again, you know, the consultant wants money, we want money, and where is that gonna be coming from down the road? If you have those answers tonight, I'll, you know, at your next meeting, just bring them up to your committee, please.
So, I can partially answer that for you. It is a ballpark number. The expense of the modulators would be less than a couple, a few hundred thousand dollars. The big expense is the transport and then the hardscaping and getting it situated. And so, that's the major, most significant cost. Working with the engineering department to, you know, all of the technical side.
Again, it's a lot of money. It's gotta come from somewhere. If you're in discussion with the mayor and his people, you know...
That's the number that we've been quoting. And the one thing, and I don't wanna throw a complete wrench. So, these modulators, there were 28 of them at Nauset High School down in Orleans or Wellfleet on Cape Cod. And we're assuming that they're available, like there may be other people that say they want them. And I just wanna be clear that there's, you know, we didn't sign anything that we are transporting them up here or anything. Again, just wanna be fully... I wish.
Put a couple of kids out there.
28 of them, yeah. Yeah, that would've helped for Thanksgiving.
Let's move the question.
Ms. Ross, well, I think Ms. Ross...
Yeah, my question pretty much, just kinda piggybacking off of Dr. Crowley was, that's based off of the used modules. What about brand-new ones? Like have you guys looked into that pricing scheme or...
We have not looked at the new pricing scheme.
Do they require a building?
What?
Do they have them sitting around or would that require time to have built? You're saying, is it Nauset that are used?
They have them, yes.
Okay.
They have, they're used. They're a couple of years old. They were at Lincoln for four of that and then Nauset used them for a year and a half.
Couple of years.
Yeah. So, they're relatively new.
The reason I ask is I recall the gentleman that we spoke to mentioned that other schools were interested as well.
Correct, yeah.
So, they was also looking to piece them, take a few, not all. And so, we may not get all of what we need if...
They're all there.
Yeah. So, the motion on the table is not to discuss which modulators, we're looking for it's to endorse the ECP's recommendation that we look into portables as a solution for ECP space issues. There's nothing further on the motion. I'll move the question on this.